Meeting of the Board of Education, District 208. Could you please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Nardi, can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Burkin?
Here.
Here. Here.
Here. Here.
Yes, here. Dr. Freitas, we have a lot of recognitions this evening.
Good evening, out of board members and Dr. Skinkis superintendent. We have a lot of students to recognize. It's a good day to be a VODAR. First, we would like to congratulate our very own student advisor to the Board of Education, Ms. Emma Lopez. Congratulations to Emma Lopez for being selected as a semifinalist for the 2024-2025 Coca-Cola Scholar Program. The Coca-Cola Scholar Program scholarship is an achievement-based scholarship awarded to students in their final year of high school. Students are recognized for their capacity to lead and serve, as well as their commitment to making a significant impact on their schools and communities. Only 1,336 semifinalists were chosen among the 105,000-plus applicants, about 1.27%. And semifinalists will compete, will complete a second application with the opportunity of becoming a Coca-Cola Scholar. So let's congratulate Emma Lopez. We'll be taking pictures outside. If the board could just give me 20 seconds, I would like a quick picture with her.
Okay.
I'll be right back.
So I'm assuming there's scholarship money involved in the Coca-Cola scholarship?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I don't know.
All right, well, we are back in business. The next group of RBT, unfortunately, cannot be present with us. However, I would like to recognize Liam Hickey, Liam Cottone, and graduates Michaela Anshet and Jenny Thomas. Congratulations to the before-mentioned RB students and a 2024 graduate for having three pieces selected as finalists for the 2024 National Student Production Award by the National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, Natus. These pieces were selected as finalists from a pool of over 2,000 entries nationwide. Liam Hickey, Liam Kishen, and Jenny Thomas's piece, Great Eye and Grille, was nominated for the Best Sports Story or Segment. Michaela Anshet's Time to Wake Up was nominated for Best Writing and Best Nonfiction Short Form. Next, I would like to congratulate the following students. Congratulations to RB students selected for the Illinois Music Education Association, ILMEA, District One Senior Band, Senior Orchestra, Senior Choir, and Senior Vocal Jazz Ensembles. Thousands of students participated in audition process to be chosen, and those selected would spend a day collaborating with conductors in large ensembles, resulting in several festival performances. The Senior Concert Festival was on Saturday, November 9th, at Humphreys University, and the Senior Jazz Festival will be on Saturday, November 16th, at Hinsdale Central High School. The selected seniors are: For Senior Band, Tabitha Rayly. Please come on up. Senior Chorus, Jack Adams. Amor Allende. Congratulations. Henry Backus. Aleah Brabec. Benjamin Busio. Emma Buscemi. Eliana Giampietro. Congratulations. Andy Kinder. Congratulations. Gina Gonzalez. Wesley Greco. Bennett Janunes. Kayla McCuttry. Carolyn Moran. Victoria Siaka. Iris Williams. For Senior Orchestra, Luna McNally. Lincoln Randall. William Wilkins. For Senior Vocal Jazz, Jack Adams. Benjamin Busio. Caroline Moran. For Honors Choir, Leah Anderson. Bette Stoney. Gabrielle Grote. Aiden McKenna. And Zachary Susi. Before we take our pictures, I would like to invite, I see a few of our music staff members here today, if you'd like to say any words, you know? I'd like to invite you, come on, Svo, come on up.
Well, we're all just, I know, I'll speak for them.
Sure.
We're all really proud of you. We know how much hard work it was to get into the IMAE District One Honors Festival. For all the different ways that you are representing RB, thank you. It was a great day on Saturday. I know the coming Saturday is going to be a great day. And, yeah, I don't know what else to add. I'm just, it's just a huge accomplishment, and fingers crossed for you all for Allstate.
Yeah. Now, we do invite the students and staff and parents for pictures, please. If you could follow Ms. Fletcher over there, it's okay. Four pictures.
You've got a while before your report, Dr. Freitas. You're okay to go if you need to take a picture.
Student Association, if you guys want to make your way up, you're next. I didn't see them here, though. Did you? So I don't think we have the Student Association this evening, but Ms. Ruska, do you want to make your announcement, since they're not here to accept the basket?
Oh, well, the Board wanted to just participate with the Student Association, and so, once again, the Board has put a basket together and hope that that furthers their mission there. We got the basket and some dollars in there, because I know they, with the dollars, they get a card so that the family can get the turkey and some of the fresh ingredients. This goes a long way.
So we'll ask Ms. Nardi to make sure that they get it this week, and it gets distributed to those who are looking for it this holiday season. So thank you, Ms. Ruska, for coordinating that. No president's report, we do have a superintendent's report. Dr. Skinkis.
First and foremost, I want to congratulate the staff, the students, and administration for earning an exemplary rating from the State Board of Education for the second consecutive year in a row. An exemplary designation is the highest designation awarded to the schools, meaning that RB is at the top, performing 10% of schools in Illinois. So congratulations to everybody for their commitment and continued hard work. The East Gym, the repair work on the East Gym floor is in progress and should be ready for use by December. I believe it's all been sanded down now. The new sections of floor where there was debuffling have been replaced, and so now they're in the process of sanding, restaining, repainting. And again, that was also, a portion of that was covered by insurance. Culinary Lab, construction on the Culinary Lab is completed. Dr. Smetan and the construction team are working through punch list items. Students should be able to begin using the lab this semester. Veterans Day, the District honored Veterans Day on Monday, November 11th. So one of the, you know, if you do not take this as an official school holiday, you need to do something in recognition of the holiday. This has been an annual practice at the, at the high school. So the high school did a great job. The students are involved, the teachers, the music program. We host a breakfast for all the veterans in the cafeteria, and then we do an all-school assembly. It's a very nice assembly. It's very, just very respectful. It's a really proud day for everybody, and the kids did a great job, and they're well behaved, and the staff appreciates. Veterans go and speak to classes after the assembly, so it was a really beneficial day for everybody involved. And finally, Board Recognition. November 15th is officially School Board Members' Day. On behalf of the staff, students, and communities of District 208, I want to extend our gratitude to the District 208 Board of Education for their dedicated service to our students and staff, your commitment to supporting student success, empowering educators, and ensuring a safe and positive learning environment is truly appreciated. Thank you for your leadership and dedication to making Riverside Brookfield High School a great place to learn and grow. Student, Superintendent Advisory Council's facilities, there's a meeting scheduled for November 20th. Finance Advisory Council met last week, and during that meeting, we reviewed the audit, the draft of the levy, the draft of the enrollment staffing projections for the 25-26 school year. The Board will get that information tonight. No updates in personnel policy. We just finished 116, and we now received 117. However, this does not need to be approved till after the New Year, so it's in your packet as a first read, and it'll allow you the next two meetings to review it. And I will pull the Advisory Council probably after the first of the year to review the packet and then bring it to the Board for adoption at one of the meetings in January. And there are no updates on the purchase or sale of leased property, and that concludes my report for November 12th.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Skinkis. Dr. Smetan, how do we want to handle the auditor reporting?
I was going to ask if the Board was comfortable moving him up.
Yes, if we can leave from the Board, we'll take him out of order?
So in the Board Packet tonight is a second read of the audit. For the past several years, we've had to do, yes, probably, I think this is our fourth year, we've had to do a single audit in addition to our normal audit due to exceeding the threshold of $750,000 from federal grants. So tonight, Chris, his partner at Evans Marshall MPs, is our auditor and is here tonight to present general findings from the audit.
Thank you, Kristen.
As Kristen was saying...
Can I interrupt really quickly? Can you find us what page number we're on, since we are taking this out of order? I'm sorry, Dr. Smetan.
71, Mary Ann.
Thank you.
So as Kristen was saying, we spend over $750,000 in federal expenditures. There's an additional audit that has to occur, so I think for the last four years, that's been the case. For the next year, we'll have one more year of that audit, and then the following year, the federal government did increase the threshold to a million, so that should be saving the district some money, and that'll be less work on my end, since I won't have to do that additional regulatory audit, and we'll just be going back to the financial audit. So, again, my name is Chris Glenn. I'm CPA and partner with Evans Marshall MPs. It's been a pleasure to work with the district as it has in the past. So I'm just going to kind of give a brief summary of the audits. I'm not going to go into specific pages realistically, unless any Board member has specific questions regarding numbers. And then, at the end of my presentation, I'll, I'll ask if any Board members has any additional questions than the ones that I did receive prior to the meeting. So, overall, a financial audit is a valuable tool for ensuring the district's compliance with legal and regulatory requirements, managing financial risk, and maintaining transparency in the financial operations of the district. A financial audit provides an independent and objective assessment of the district's financial statements and internal controls, which helps regulators and the general public to have confidence in the accuracy and reliability of the district's financial reporting. As a financial statement auditor, I have to adhere to certain professional standards and ethical guidelines throughout the audit process to maintain independence and objectivity. The audit went really, really well this year. The district did receive a clean or unmodified audit opinion, and I also did not run into any audit reporting or internal control issues. So, you know, the two main things there, unmodified audit opinion, which means financial statements were materially correct, and then on the internal control side, I didn't run into any issues with the internal control process that I did look at. So, on that side, then comes ISB with the Financial Profile Score. So each year, the district receives a Financial Profile Score, which is a summary of a couple different financial ratios. The highest attainable score you can receive is a four. Riverside Brookfield's school, District 208, received an actual perfect score of four. So that's the highest attainable score, which is recognition, which is fantastic. Like I said earlier, this score gives an overall summary of the district's finances as a whole, and the score also reflects the district's strong commitment to continuous improvement, financial health, and fiscal responsibility. I also want to bring up, when reading the financial statements, which are, I'm sure everyone is so interested in reading this lovely work that I do, but just be kept in mind that there are two different bases in terms of, from the audit and what the Board does to receive monthly. So the monthly financial statements that the Board receives and that's presented to the public are on cash basis of accounting. So, in layman's terms, whatever's on the bank statement is what's on our books. The audit, I come in, I, I do it under the modified accrual basis of accounting, which basically measures revenues when they're recognized in the period where they're earned and become measurable, and the expenses are recognized when incurred. So accounts receivable and accounts payable. That's kind of the difference in bases there. With that being said, I know one of the Board members did have a question regarding the MDA, so I guess I can be specific with that page here.
Page 87 of Board Book.
87.
So 87 of Board Book, and then from my audit, it's going to be page 11. So, this is the management's discussion and analysis. So basically, the MDA is basically a summary of, you know, everything throughout the detailed portion of the audit, and there's a mandatory section that says we have to put some data in there revolving, involving factors affecting the district's future. So, these are kind of generic in terms of the majority of school districts within the state, and obviously, the Consumer Price Index has been a growing concern within the economy. So, basically, the sentence in here says, some of the factors that could affect the future of the district's financial health would be CPI, which has been increasing, and obviously, lately, it has been cooling off. So, the district, because of the higher inflationary prices, we've received rising costs of supply, services, employment, and benefits. So, the issue that we have here is that there is a PTAL law, which limits the district's ability for their tax levy to, the levy power is limited to the lesser of 5% or the percentage increasing CPI. So when CPI is over 5%, the district can't levy enough to offset rising costs greater than 5%. So if we're giving greater than 5% salary increases, and we can't levy that, obviously, that increases our expenditures. So, that's, that kind of correlates to that point in the audit. And then, obviously, as rising costs, then, those costs get rolled down to the state for pension obligations, which then increases the threat that one day, the state could pass the cost to the district. So, there's another point here that does say, you know, with the state of Illinois's financial condition, the threat of the normal cost for pension could one day be passed to the district, because the majority of pensions are paid from the state with limited contributions from the district itself. So, I think that kind of covers some of the factors affecting the district's future. But, like I said, every school...
And those are, I mean, those are fairly standard. Those are not specific to 208. Does that answer your question?
A little bit. Making sure that there wasn't anything specific was where I was going with it, so...
Yeah. Correct. And that's, this is more of like a generic thing for every school district within the state. There's nothing that's being specifically stated that it's going to be passed down to the district. So, I appreciate you saying that as well. So, at this point, like I said, I'm not going to go through specific numbers. If the Board has any questions for me, I'll take them at this time.
I mean, in, in general, this is great work from Dr. Smetan and, and the team. This is an unmodified opinion. I don't think, we, we went through this with, in pretty good detail at, at Finance Committee. Are there any questions from anyone?
Thank you to everyone's hard work on that.
Yeah. It takes a lot to get through an audit, so we appreciate that.
That's the part I did miss. I usually have that in my notes. I did want to thank the entire business department.
I just did for you.
And I want to say too.
Okay.
Okay, we'll just say thanks, Dr. Skinkis, for always being there.
Good job.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chris. Thank you. Dr. Smetan, you have a couple points for October 10th, right?
Yes, I have...
Do your report next.
My report, and then several special reports tonight that fall under my report.
What page is your report?
Begins on page seven.
Okay. Give us a minute.
And this ties back to the audit, correct?
Pieces of it, yes.
Okay.
So I will begin with the monthly financial reports through the month of October, which represents 33% of the fiscal year. Total operating revenue for the month was $3,174,299, with 57% coming from bond proceeds. So that's a little misleading, because we received the money in an operating account, but then we transferred it out to capital projects. 13% came from property tax and CPRT, 9% from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and then also 9% from federal and state grant reimbursements. The total operating expenditures for the month were $1,842,086, with 77% towards salary and benefits, 3% on building supplies, and 3% on special education tuition. Next, I provide the summary of revenues, which shows the district has received 36.96% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is higher than this time last year, but that's just due to the timing of property tax. The summary of expenditures shows that the district has spent 30.95% of the budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount is a little lower to where we were last year, which was around 36%. As always, I've included the statement of revenue and expenditures for all of our board accounts, as well as our activity accounts. So next, I'll go into some of the additional reports that I have provided for the Board. The first is the staffing and enrollment projections, which I include every year at this time. So, the first thing I include is the final staffing summary for the current school year. So you can see the overall class average in the building is around 25.
Are you on a, are you on a report now?
Yeah, it's, it's covered within my report.
So should, do you want Mary Ann to have up there 28?
You can go to page 30. Because the next page is, is just the actual data that we receive from the feeder schools, which are tallies that we then use to make the enrollment projections. So, page 30 is where we talk about enrollment projections. So, as you can see, last year, at this time, I projected that there would be 1,674 students for this school year, and as of October 25th, we have 1,669 students, so a difference of five students. That number's fluctuating, you know, depending on what, what day you pull it, but we were pretty close. Next year, I'm projecting there to be 1,672 students, so basically, for practical purposes, remaining flat for enrollment. And then, when you look at the bottom chart on that page, if you take out transition students and outplacement students, and the reason we do that is because they don't, they don't impact, it's really hard to see, they don't factor into the overall FTE. That number is 1,618. So that's the number that we anticipate for next year that we need to staff for. And why that is important is because when you go on the next page, page 31, you'll see the overall staffing projection for the following school year. So, in the center, we begin by looking at where we were this year. So, again, we are projected to be 1,674. When we look at what we're actually staffing for, we're about 1610. That takes out outplacement, transition students, students that are at a dual degree, not dual enrollment, but students that are at Triton, getting a dual degree, homeschooled students, et cetera. So, when you look at the number of students that take three to five classes versus six versus seven, you put that into the chart, and then it tells you what number you should be at in terms of FTE. What is also factored into the overall number is the number that's all the way to the left chart, which is required FTE. So that includes counselors, social workers, special education, et cetera. So when you add those two numbers together, the model shows that we should be at for this school year 107.7, and our current FTE is 111.4. So, based off of the model, you know, we have an additional 3.7 staff than what the model is recommending. Now, sometimes you have bad breaks and things of that nature, so it'll never be exact. And so, when you go down to the three options for next year, we would put in the projection for overall enrollment, as well as then the projection for the number of students that we need FTE for, which is that 1618. And option A, keeping overall class sizes at around 27, which would be 108.5. And then you can see, when you increase class sizes, obviously, the FTE is going to get lower for the overall projection. And then, you can see, looking at the required FTE for next year, there are a lot of unknowns. We don't, we won't know what our special education needs are at this point in the year, and things of that nature. So the, some of the required FTE will fluctuate. But overall, because enrollment is, for all practical purposes, staying flat, I would recommend that our staffing stay at 111, and that we reserve a .4 for transfers and staffing conflicts, bad breaks is what we often refer to it, so that we can overall finish at 111.4. I want to caution the Board, this report, at this time of the year, is always just overall FTE for the building. It's not where FTE actually falls within departments, because we don't know what students have signed up for yet. So this is just based off of the number of students in the building and the number of classes students take. This is what we anticipate our needs being in terms of FTE. So I have several other reports, but I can pause to secure...
I don't think there were any questions submitted on this report. I have the list of all the Board member questions that were submitted via email. Again, the reason why we do this always in November is because you're approving the levy in December. When we come back second semester, that's when we'll start doing staffing based on student core selections that occurred up and through January. And then you start right away in March and April, starting to build the budget already for next year. So this just gives you an idea that the recommendation is to maintain flat, not decrease or increase any staffing. We don't know where those staffing will be assigned. But Kristen's done a really good job. good job in the last several years. If you look at what our projection was and where our actual was to predict within, you know, three to five, seven students, I mean, that's a really good job. So I think we've been pretty accurate with this so far.
Any questions on the staffing report? I mean, again, it's preliminary, it's aggregate. Looking, looking?
Okay.
Okay.
Moving on, a new annual report that I need to present to the board is called the Operational Fund Balance Reduction Report. So the school code was amended by a public act to require districts that do not receive federal impact aid, which is us, to complete this report on an annual basis and present the written report to the Board of Education. So what it does is it includes the annual average expenditures of the district's operating funds for the previous three fiscal years. And then it compares that-
It's page 32, I think, Mary Ann.
Yes. It compares that average to the combined cash reserve balance of those operating funds. And if that exceeds two and a half times of the average expenditures, then the district would be required to complete a reduction plan. So what this is practically doing is making sure that the district, any district in the state of Illinois is not sitting on a huge balance in its cash reserve. And if so, it would require you to spend that down. So if you look at the actual data for the district, the combined cash reserve balance for the district's operating funds is roughly $13 million. And this amount doesn't exceed two and a half times the average expenditures, because the average expenditures is almost $29 million. So we're nowhere near needing to complete the Operating Fund Reduction Plan Report, but every year I will need to present this to the board and submit it to the state. So this is the first year we're doing that.
Do you know if the intention is to incorporate this into the report card? Or is this going to someplace else at the state?
That is a very good question. Um-
I think it's looking at property tax relief, so that school districts don't continue to levy and then stockpile while communities are feeling the impact of inflation and the economy.
Correct. I don't know if it's going to be listed anywhere, because often things that are listed on the school report card, you have to submit data in their system. And this I just need to email to the state. So I would, I would guess that probably not initially it's on the school report card would be my guess.
But would it not also speak to, you know, the evidence-based funding? I mean, when I went to the West Cook meeting, they were talking about how there's still a tier four, five, and six that have yet to be funded. So maybe it's just a way to do an audit of monies that are out there.
It could be a data point that someone uses at some point if the legislature decides to ask.
Because there's, I didn't realize there were so many levels, and they were speaking that they have, they're not even funded yet. They're hoping to, you know, grow that program more.
The biggest concern, though, is schools sitting on money and not spending it, and the tax year that they're collecting it. So you're putting a tax burden on the communities, and then if you're just putting it in the bank, obviously, we're not anywhere near that . We're at 46%, so.
And obviously, this exists because there are school districts in the state that have such a healthy fund balance that, right, this applies to them. We are not, again, I will stress, we are not in that situation. Moving on, contract tool I provide annually for the board. This is just informational. This is something that I use internally with the business office to keep track of our expiring contracts. There are four contracts this year. Life Touch, which is our yearbook photo contract, which you'll see tonight as a first read. Proven IT, which is our photocopyers, will be up at the end of this year. Our electricity contract with Exterro through cooperative, purchasing cooperative ITS. And then for student buses, we've been approving that on an annual basis, and we'll do that for one more year before we go out to bid next year for buses for field trips and athletics. The next informational item that I have is the district's liability insurance is set to expire in December. As many of you previously remember, I talked about having to do an assessment, and that assessment significantly raising the value of our property. As a result, our liability insurance will increase about $70,000 due to the property reassessment. There was a question submitted, if there's anything we can do to lower the increase. I have a call with our representative on Thursday. However, given the renewal is in December, there's not going to, we're going to be limited with what our options are. So once I know what those are, I will send that information along to the Superintendent's Subadvisory Council on Insurance, and then we can go from there.
How long have we been self-insured now?
This is our fifth, this is our fifth year, I believe.
And our premiums have gone up pretty significant?
The cost has more than doubled in the last five years.
And there, I know we went self-insured because our cooperative-
Our insurance cooperative dissolved five years, or six years ago. So it forced our hand to, we had to make a change to a different insurance.
Are there still cooperatives out there that we can?
Yes, there are two other cooperatives.
I mean, obviously, our renewal year is, I believe, December 1st or April 31st.
And I guess I wasn't thinking for this year at all. I just think it's something we should be thinking about.
No, it would have to be a year process.
Do you agree?
The issue with properties happening coast to coast, you know, with commercial, you probably even see the values of your home insurance, for insurance purposes. So it's an industry-wide issue. We just happen to get hit with rate, which is common, but the values have been reevaluated, you know, both the contents and the building. So that was a big, uh-
It was a big hit.
That was a big hit.
Correct.
Well, I would just like to see some suggestions from them. Obviously, I understand this renewal is this renewal, and we can't move horses mid-stride, or whatever the expression would be. But I think understanding what may be out there as alternatives, I think, would be helpful over the next six months.
Yeah.
Probably, it could be a good idea, if you can, through your IASBO context, to get an idea of what the annual renewals rates have been for the co-ops, too. Are they seeing such a significant?
They are not seeing nearly as significant increase. I received numbers from one informally, but I plan to start that after the New Year's, get specific numbers.
And we've only had the one claim, right?
Um-
That, I guess, was the sign a claim?
Sign?
The sign wasn't necessarily a claim, because it, I mean, it was, but our insurance company was able to receive, I believe, most, if not all, of that back from the person in the state.
Subrogated there, okay.
So the East Gym was the most recent claim. I believe we had a claim on our mini buses that was minor. That was a couple of years ago.
But nothing within the last two years?
So nothing, nothing significant that would cause our insurance to increase stuff like that.
It's just strictly the values.
Correct.
And the sewer we did abuse, like with the-
The sewer we did not end up finding in the insurance claim.
I just think it'd be appropriate to give it up.
Absolutely.
We gotta definitely kick the tires over to next year.
And then lastly, just for the board's information, we had our first Township Treasure Board Meeting. So I included the report for the board's information, and the next meeting would be held on January 15th. So I can provide an additional report at that time.
And I have to say, this was a much more comprehensive report than the samples they had previously provided. So I don't know if it's your presence on the board, or just they're, they're getting it together, but I was happy to see that.
Probably they're getting it together, but I do agree. I thought the information, the meeting itself was very informative. And so I'm hopeful that we'll continue that trend moving forward. And that concludes my report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Smetana. Dr. Freitas?
Good evening, our board members. Once again, again, it's a great day to be a Bulldog. For the second consecutive year, we achieve exemplary status. We are top 10% in the state of Illinois, and we have no underperforming groups. That doesn't mean we're, we're perfect, right? We're striving towards perfection. We have a lot of work to do. But that means that we are a high-achieving school. You know, and I want to thank the faculty and the staff. I mean, the teachers we have here at RB teaching our students are outstanding. I mean, we have authors, we have influencers, and I don't mean social media influencers. We have teachers that are authors, there are therapists that work for national organizations like the College Board. I mean, we have, you know, I always look at, I'm like, we have professors here, we have inventors and historians. This staff is magnificent. You know, we have students that are dedicated, that show up to class, that show up to school, that do their homework, do re-do's, that maximize their learning opportunities. You know, we have outstanding parents at home that support their kids in their homework, remind them to get up, that are active parents. You know, we're in the top 10%. It is absolutely fantastic. And everybody, you know, is, should be congratulated for that. We have a, we have an outstanding Board of Education that set the mission a few years ago of excellence. We have a great visionary superintendent. I couldn't be more blessed. And everyone should be proud of that designation. And I want to thank, you know, my building leadership. I'm blessed with great assistant principals, Ms. Kylie Link, with Ms. Beth Augustine, Mr. Dave Mann, and Mr. Phil Torres. You know, my deans, Dean Carol Weinberg, and Dean Hackes. Without them, this achievement wouldn't be possible. You know, we have a great faculty here at RB. There's no reason why we can't do it again this upcoming year. We have some placement testing coming up. We had today, we had a placement testing in growth, Tamara Kamark and Hauser. Now the testing happens at the feeder schools. You know, our division head just kind of visits, and everything's monitored and done in the classroom in their school. And that's proven to be more effective and created, has created a stronger partnership between us and the feeder schools. As far as interventions, in December, next month, I will have an update on the academic interventions we're implementing, and how our students are progressing in those interventions through first semester. I'll bring a formal report there. For school coaching operations, we just celebrated Veterans Day. You know, it was a wonderful event. I'm sure there's, we have social media, and we have videos, and we have pictures out there. But, you know, I received a real nice compliment from a retired Colonel who goes nationwide to his events. And he said, I've visited so many schools, this was the most well-behaved, you know, group of students I've been. And from what I heard, I'm not a military guy, but usually they don't get compliments very easy, and where you kind of have to earn the respect. So, I mean, our students were fantastic. Again, our staff were supervising. They kind of reminded their friends, hey, don't talk, we have veterans here, let's be respectful. So I want to thank everybody that was involved in making a special day for our veterans. On November 21st, we have a parent university number three, bullying and the impact of social media on our youth. That will be in the auditorium from 6 to 7. Everyone is invited. At the end of the month, on the 27th to the 29th, we have our fall break, and classes will resume on Monday, December 2nd. Our Bulldog Bistro, our new kitchen, is finally open, and everyone is just amazed every time they walk by. Thank you for the Board of Education, for your support, and for District Office for making that happen, you know. I will be presenting our District Equity Leadership Action Plan right after this report. And then just a few more updates here of the course selection process and curriculum guide update. So at the high school, we started the course selection process for the next school year. The administration is using the school year to review and revise the curriculum guide, which aligns to the Board of Education recommendation that was provided during the district goal discussion at the August Board of Education meeting. Course selection has been moved to an online platform, SchoolLink, so there should be no confusion with old courses or course numbers. Every course that RB offers is loaded into the SchoolLink's platform and available for students to select for the next school year. We're also addressing the year-long, year-long courses being taken as semester class. I have asked building administration to encourage our division heads and teacher leaders to propose the classes that they would like to see moved to semester, to semester courses to accommodate student requests. We're working with a superintendent, Dr. Skink, is on this matter, just in case we need to bring the changes, we need to bring changes to the curriculum guide to the board before the end of the first semester.
Dr. Freitas?
Yes.
So we had two questions, so Board of Education, this is what I sent you on Friday, just as a precursor. Dr. Freitas met with me on Thursday. So to recall what we discussed last spring when we went through several reports on staffing and student enrollment in classes, and it was identified that there were students that were splitting year-long classes and taking them as a semester. And one of the board members asked a question, you know, that this is listed in the curriculum guide, as a year-long class, how are we adjusting it to a semester, right? So then, we went through the student, the district goals in August, the board also wanted included that we review the curriculum guide to make sure if there's anything that needs to be adjusted or implemented properly, we do that. Also, review to make sure that there was an equity lens looking at the curriculum guide. So last year, we identified 31 students were taking year-long courses as semester courses. And so what was happening there, that's between the Clarion, the Rouser, and some music classes. So historically, the trend would be that if there was a conflict, a student transferred in in the middle of the year, a student was an early grad, a student absolutely needed to take another course to graduate, or to get in a four-year university, or their post-secondary plan, if there was a conflict, there was some flexibility built in between the counselor and the teacher to allow a student to take a course for just a semester. Now, this was supposed to be kind of like as an end, as-needed basis, not something that became a regular practice, and obviously not something that was to result in like, you know, 31 students doing it in one year, 27 just in music. So I encouraged the team to review the curriculum guide, as well as to enforce what's in the curriculum guide, or to come up with some suggestions. And so Dr. Freitas came to see me on Thursday, said he did field some student requests for taking some, year-long classes as a semester. And so I notified the board last week that, you know, our process for this normally takes place in February, and we'll start in February, March, and we start looking at curriculum proposals and changing the curriculum guide. And but if something as simple as if we want to amend the curriculum guide to allow students the flexibility to take a year-long course as a semester course, there really is a couple of things. One, we need to fix some things on our backend so that their student is only being counted in the semester course, not for the year, and they're sitting somewhere else. So what's kind of been happening is, you'll have a student that'll come in and say, you know, I can only take, I only have room for a semester of Clarion, or a semester of Rouser, because I need to take this other elective, or I need to finish this other course. So one thing that we need to fix on the operational end is that student's counted for the whole year in that Clarion or Rouser course, as well as being counted for in an eighth class somewhere else. And they're really not, they're only sitting in one class for a semester. They're not sitting in the full class, or the class for the full year. So that's the first thing that we need to be corrected. That's an easy fix that we can fix on the operational end. What I would need board approval on is, we also have to make sure, from the equity lens, if we're going to be doing this, this is something that needs to be stated in the curriculum guide, that if a student has a conflict, that they can appeal it and take, you know, we, Dr. Freitas would have to set up with his team administrative procedures, but they would need to have the ability to have a process to where they could only take a course for a semester. So now, again, we can fix that, so that we can change some things in the computer system. So if a student's going to request only take a year-long course for a semester, we can adjust it on the computer so they're only being counted for that semester that they're taking the course. But secondly, we have to have it in the curriculum guide, because right now, there's nothing stated. So it can't just be word of mouth. It has to be something that either All-for-One, or we're not enforcing it. You should have by you a copy of the curriculum guide. Most of the Colodities classes, I gave you some examples, a lot of them specifically say this is a year-long course. So we need to either amend that, or put a precursor at the bottom that just says, in the event of a conflict, you know, you may be able to get administrative approval to only take this as a semester course. You know, but that's something the board needs to decide and approve. The curriculum guide is board policy, it's approved every year. Changes to the curriculum guide get approved by the board. And so we, and when we start, when we recognized last spring that we had that many students amending year-long courses and being counted twice in different sections and being, sitting in classrooms that they're not sitting in, you know, that was part of the direction from the board to clean this up. I don't think this is something that needs to wait. It's a pretty easy fix. It will also provide students some flexibility as they go through course selection right now, if this is something the board wants to implement.
I mean, we have been moving towards, like, opening up, you know, the electives in more choice, so students can fit in what they want to fit. You know, time, you know, time is finite. And if the course is conducive to being where you could take either or semester, you know, I just think it gives the student an advantage.
This would only apply to electives?
I, right now, I have three courses, the Rouser, the Clarion, and then, well, I should say, two courses, Rouser, Clarion, and then there were, I want to say about six music courses. Concert band, symphonic, concert band had one, symphonic band seems to have six- Concert band, symphonic, concert band had one, symphonic band seems to have six, right? Is that right, Dr. Freitas?
Yeah, one, two, three, four, five, yeah.
Jazz band has had three, string orchestra, two, chamber, three, concert, two, Rouser, four. Clarion had zero this year, but they had some the previous year. But those seem to be, you know, we would normally not typically do this when a student signs up for a year-long anatomy and physiology or zoology or one of those classes. It's not something that is usually broken up. But there has been some practice of this, so either we need to come up and approve and put it in the language in the board-approved document, which is the curriculum guide, that we will allow these conflicts to be worked out. The simple fix on the operational side is easy for us to put that in the computer system so that the courses, you know, when a kid signs up for a year-long band class, we just have to click first semester, second semester. Right now, it's only listed because the course guide only lists it as a year-long course. So there's some operational things that we can amend and fix rather quickly. But in order to adjust the curriculum guide, we need board approval. I don't think this is one of those things that needs to go through multiple reads. I think it should be discussed tonight and if possible, maybe approved at the December meeting. But I don't know what the board is looking to.
Yeah, I want to be clear what the discussion is, right? It seems like we talked about looking at, to Laura's point, taking a lot of classes as semester versus full-year classes. And that seems to be a very big change for teachers who have a year-long curriculum set up. But I think what we're, what I'm hearing you say is that because we have this practice in place, it's an ad hoc practice at this point, right? It's, I know someone who knows that you can take this class only half a year, so we're looking to put like an asterisk in the, in the guide that simply says, "Upon approval." But are there any parameters to that approval?
I don't think upon approval. I think a student can legit register. I mean, you think some of the courses...
No, but you're registering for, it's, I guess my point is, instead of, you're registering for a full-year course, upon approval, you would take it for one semester versus two?
No, I would think that if we were to move, a student could say, "Well, my sport, I can't really take this class the full year, but I would love to be able to take it the second semester when I'm not in the sport." So a legit semester class.
So I will say this in complete transparency. I asked Dr. Freitas to email all these teachers and ask them what they would want. And all the teachers emailed back, they do not want semester courses, they want year-long courses. Because they are worried that if students had semester courses, that would, could create a possible flock. So, I'm open to either. I mean, you know, and I think we need to maybe have Dr. Freitas, if the board wants, wants to go back and he can go back and talk to, do they want to just have some parameters in place if an exception needs to be made? But we, the one thing we do need to do is it can't be word of mouth.
No.
If we're going to allow this, it has to be something that's posted in the curriculum guide, the administration, the building administration, the high school principal and the counselors, the assistant principals, the lead teachers, the visionists, they can figure out what's the parameters to put these things in place.
So what are these 30-something students taking as their eighth class then?
Do you have, I know we pulled some schedules. Were you in the, when Beth pulled some of those?
Yeah, I mean, I'm trying to think what they think off the top of my head. I mean, we have such a robust, you know, selection of courses, nothing's coming up at this moment.
The ones I remember, there was one student that had to take sociology.
Yes, yeah.
There was one...
Which is a single semester course, correct?
Single semester elective.
Semester course, yeah.
There was another student that was trying to get into computer science.
That's for this coming school year?
Right?
Yeah, they wanted to take pre-engineering and computer science. And so as a result, they only wanted to take a semester of band.
Next school year?
Next, that's for next school year. There was a student this school year that took a study hall, there was a student that wanted early release. There were other students that chose other electives. I believe one was in visual arts class. I don't have the comprehensive list, but that was from our discussion.
I just think it's, that to me is a curious, I mean, to the point of what are people interested in?
Yeah, with electives, I would think semester class gives you more opportunities to explore more...
Right, but I see the teachers fear that, you know, everybody might want to take it in the fall and then they don't have, but four or five students signed up for Rouser or Clarion or something where they really need a steady group year-round. So, but I wonder with the study hall or early release, like you're giving up a credit or half a credit.
Well, that seems like one of those, I'm going to say, rules that should be in place, that if you're going to take a full-year class as a single semester class, can you do it as a freshman right now? I mean, no freshman would do this, right? So assuming it's upperclassmen?
It's majority upperclassmen.
I mean, it's, I guess I'm trying to understand who the university, I think it'd be upperclassmen who are now exploring multiple options. They want to take that psychology class, they want to take rock band, whatever, they want to do something different, right? But I think...
Potentially, do you limit it to upperclassmen? Like they have the PE waiver for students that are in sports, it's only if you're on varsity?
That's a good suggestion. I mean, that's...
Well...
I have a question.
So the band, the PE waiver for band is different?
I get that, but I'm talking about the ones in sports.
They get the whole semester where sports only get the weeks of their season.
But it's limited to upperclassmen is your point?
For the sports.
What conversations take place during the...
Advising sessions.
Advising sessions? Because my kid came home and he's like, "I'm going to take early release next year." And I was like, "No, you're not. We're not doing early release next year because you have to be in school." So what, at the advising level, what are they, like, do these conversations take place? I'm assuming if you need to drop a class in the spring because you now all of a sudden need a half a credit to graduate, you would have caught that at the initial advising session, right? So there would be no need to now drop something.
So I sat in this year during some of this discussion. So when Dr. Freitas brought this to me, I went and sat in on two students, what they, what that whole platform looks like, because it moved to an online platform called SchoolLink. And so they get a dropdown now, it shows what classes they've accomplished, what classes they can choose, what classes. However, that also is sent home to the parent. And so the parent is supposed to review that prior to that appointment so that they can say...
I got, yeah.
So, when a kid comes in, if they say, "Hey, I'm taking an early release," that's not like, we advise against that, that we're assuming that that student, that parent talked about it. Where that would come up would be, "Hey, I'm taking an early release." And the counselor's job is to be like, "Well, you're short two credits, you can't take an early release." Or you didn't achieve your social studies elective credit, or you didn't choose your fine arts elective credit. That's where the advising would come in.
Sorry, and then question, because, so example, the Rouser, four in semester, only semester one, and then there was...
So I talked, I talked a little background on the Rouser. So what happens is a kid may take yearbook for the full year the year before and they really liked it. So they want to be editor or they want to be assistant, but they can't afford to do it their whole year with an AP course or something like that. So the teacher would make an exception for a kid to do it for a semester, so that they can at least still be part of the yearbook for a semester.
And then, for example, concert chorale, where did the two kids come from for semester two? Because they're...
That's a good question. So that's a kid that maybe says, "I can't, I can only fit this in my schedule second semester."
I would think as we have more electives, you know, freshmen aren't doing this probably because they just don't know it's an option. But as there's more election, more electives and students see more things and talk to more students, they're like, "Oh, I want to try that, I want to try that." That's, you know, that's kind of...
But to me, that's the big takeaway, is that people don't know it's an option except by word of mouth.
Right.
I mean, I think, I guess, I don't think we're in a position to take year-long classes for next year and make them into semester classes. That's a, that seems like a...
Big jump.
Yeah, I mean, that seems like a logistics concern. I thought that discussion was taking place more in context of our next curriculum guide review, if that would be a potentiality for '26, '27.
Yeah, and I was thinking like, like an elective course, not necessarily, like a biology course, you wouldn't do that.
Right, right. But I think, you know, this list here, I, I'm, the idea that someone would take it first semester and not take it second semester so that they could do a study hall, that seems like that's not what we're trying to...
But what if somebody says, "I really want to do, you know, like culinary, oh, I can't wait, it sounds so fun." And they get in and they're like, "Shoot me now, I don't want to do this. I want to get out of here and do something else."
It's a semester course.
Yeah, those are semester-long courses.
But these aren't people who signed up for, let's say, jazz band and then dropped it. These are people who plan to only take one semester of jazz band.
Correct. So the, one of the issues...
So there's another segment of people...
The issue that came out during the course selection is, why did we have so many kids last year when we were breaking down all those charts? Why did we have so many kids that were taking semester of, you know, a music course or semester Clarion and then they were taking something else? And so that's what brought it up to the board of like, well, wait, these are year-long courses. And so then what we identified was the kids were coming in and saying, "Well, I can only fit a semester of band in the fall, and then I need to take something else in the spring or I need to take my government in the spring or..." And so, but the problem is, they're being counted as banned for the year, and they're not in banned for the year, they're only in banned for the semester. So that's an operational thing we're going to fix on our end, but...
Regardless of what the board does, so that's an operational thing.
Well, I won't have to do that if the board says, "Hey, no, that's either a year or nothing." But I don't think, I don't think that's the smart decision. I mean, if I had to give you a recommendation, I would say at the minimum, we should post something in the curriculum guide if there's a conflict or a student needs to take this an elective for only a year or only a semester. And then we have the administration approve some guidelines, considering that's more of an administrative procedure per.
The other thing is, 22 plus nine is 31, but 22 minus nine is 13. So that's really only 13 students that we're looking at.
This is, I find it, yeah, it's, they're only taking semester two.
Right, you got to go by segments.
So they're, they're getting in halfway through. And so I guess...
There are nine kids that...
I'm listening to this, wondering, what does it, how does it impact a teacher as you are going through your content? And I recognize that some of it is more performance-based than practice when it comes to the, any music-based class, but when it comes to Rouser, you know, there's, there's a process that you're going through, through the year. And I want to know how broken that is for a student who is taking half and then it's showing up on their transcript as you took this, yet you don't have the full experience of it. And I'm speaking with that very personally, so...
Yeah, how does it show about...
I can back out of it and try to say...
It just shows a semester credit.
But you didn't go through the whole content and so...
There's, there is, I mean, there, we have, we have multiple ways to do this. This is not one of those like, we don't want to do it or just need to go through the steps of having the board say what the board... If you change the course to a semester, an example would be concert marching band would be the fall, knowing that the student has the marching band obligation in the fall, concert band would be the spring. That's one, that's if you broke them down into true semester courses, right? That'd be an example. It'd be Clarion one, it'd be Clarion two, it'd be Rouser one, Rouser two.
Which is done with all the electives regularly.
Those teachers have told us that if we end, they would prefer, they would not. They would rather not make exceptions to their year-long course than to split it into a semester because trying to teach the yearbook in the middle of the year or starting over with the editing process, et cetera.
I wanted to mention that you're...
So when I, when I sent the email, the email response we got back from the music department was that they would prefer just keep things as is. Well, to keep things as is means we have to at least put the exception in the curriculum guide so that all students have access to the same buffer or parameters, however we're going to do if there is a conflict. I can't just keep going word of mouth.
And you're a part of a team, and if you're coming in second semester, you missed semesters worth of practice together. And if you're leaving after first semester, you're dropping your portion responsibility in terms of what, I recognize, like, you plug and fill as you need to, but I think it needs to be a discussion as to what does it mean when students leave and how, like you said, how do we make it equitable so that people recognize that number one, it's not encouraged? And number two, it is, it's an option to navigate the tight situations that are otherwise existing.
I was going to say, we should see if there's some insight you can share.
Yeah, during freshman year, I actually had the opportunity to take a second semester of Clarion during my freshman year, and I had the opportunity to split it also during my junior year because, to fulfill a social sciences requirement. And I think, like, having the opportunity to do that was beneficial and allowed, in allowing me to fulfill my requirements. And for the students who come in second semester for a year-long course, like such as Clarion, we train those students to understand what our expectations for them are. We typically have a bootcamp for them in the beginning of the year, like at the start of first semester. But during second semester, for those who are coming in, we train those students to understand how to create an article, how to work on layout. So...
So it's doable?
So it is doable. And I would, from my perspective, I think including something in the curriculum guide, like a little abstract, would be beneficial since I didn't know, I had the opportunity to do that until I had a conversation with my counselor.
No, and I think it's great that the teachers, in your case and others, clearly have accommodated people who have scheduling conflicts and demands and life and all those things. So that's, I think that's a real kudos to the teachers who've done this, but seeing, I think it needs to be done fairly. I think that's what we're hearing.
Do we have like a student group where the students have like a little forum where they could...
Dr. Freitas has a regular meeting.
Where they could chime in on this question? I mean, that's great insight. You've, you've had that experience twice and it really helped do what you needed to do. I mean, we have such a robust curriculum here.
The issue isn't that someone can't do it, it's how we count it as we are recognizing...
And make it equitable for all students.
How we communicate it and how you count it.
Correct. Because like she said, she didn't know what you're...
I think we all agree that's a great situation.
Yeah.
It's just understanding how we can equitably allow opportunity for our students.
Right.
So...
Yeah, and right now, it is completely word of mouth.
And whether it's Clarion one, Clarion two, or whether it's Clarion, and then you make these exceptions, but that exception part needs to be communicated that everyone has access to that. But then you get into, well, it just becomes easier if you have Clarion one, Clarion two because now...
That's why I think we leave that up to the teachers. My, my thought, having this discussion with the board tonight and sending this to you was, is the board opposed having Dr. Freitas come back with a recommendation? I do think we need to approve something in December for the kids that are picking courses now, so that at least for next year, they have, whether it's going to be, I doubt it will be the semester thing based on the feedback we got from the teachers. But I would think the conflict thing is probably in a short-term fix. And then I think there's time for the rest of the school year and then through the curriculum guide process to go through with the advisory council, the teachers, the assistant principals, about a long-term fix.
Yeah, I guess, I recognize we want to do something for next year for the curriculum guide. I don't know if we're pushing too fast to have a thought-out conclusion. If we do get a recommendation and we're asked to, to potentially approve it next month, I'd like to know it two weeks ahead of time to kind of think through it. I don't want to be given three days to say, you know, what we're all...
We've already made the exception for like, like I said, 31 students just this year. So I think there's some things in place. I just think we need to make sure all students know when they go in for course selection and if they have this conflict like Emma brought up, that this will be available to them.
And then we also need a way of accounting that, accounting for what...
You said they could...
I think we're getting into the administrative details of it, I don't think is our job. I mean, that's my opinion. I think, like, how, what the exact parameters are, I'm not even sure we need to weigh in on. I think it's more about, should the curriculum guy, guide asterisk codify what has essentially been past practice?
Should the board amend the curriculum guide to have this noted in there so that all kids have access to this conflict resolution? Breaking up a year-long course into a semester if they need it. That's really what I need the board to take action on, possibly next month.
I think some of the bumpers I was referencing might be too far for board policy. That, to me, is more of the larger curriculum guide discussion. So I would take that kind of off the table. As I'm talking about, I'd like to see some bumpers. Is it just upperclassmen? Is it people who are not going to use this as a, as a study hall? They're going to, you know, it needs to be for another academic or elective class? I mean, some kind of parameter like that?
Well, and I don't think it has to be upperclassmen because her student council member took advantage of it early on in her high school.
But again, I think, I think those details, I think that there's probably some more research and the administration should weigh in on that. I think it's, what we're being asked, and if I'm wrong, Dr. Skinkis, is, you know, do we want...
Do we put a statement in the curriculum guide saying...
Yes, saying, right.
I need, is the board willing to do, amend the curriculum guide, which is a board-approved document? Are they willing to amend it on short-term notice so that kids selecting classes for the upcoming school year have the ability to break some of these year-long courses into a semester if they can't fit all of it into their schedule? That's what I'm, and...
If it's a practice, I think it needs to be communicated.
Right, because right now, I think, I, I know from my experience, it is not consistently communicated.
So you'll come back with recommendations?
I will come back. I'll have Dr. Freitas work on that. I want to make sure the teachers have enough time to think through whether they want short-term fixes this semester, or they want to just do the language, and then they'll work on the administrative procedure on how it will be implemented at the building level. Dr. Freitas, I think you see from the reaction tonight, like, we really shouldn't, if a teacher is passionate, and all three teachers that we received emails from, that you received them, that you shared with me, were all like, we'd like to keep this a year-long course. So we really shouldn't be amending a year-long course for a study hall or an early release. Had a year-long course should be, I think you kind of are hearing from the board, like, that should be because I need to make up a graduation requirement, I need to take something I'm interested in studying, I need to take something to help me get into my future college with post-secondary plan, right? Like, it should be something like that.
Ryan, do you have something else?
No, I mean, I think I'm good with where this discussion is kind of going. It's a lot to think about, so...
Yeah, no, and I think getting their feedback is important, right? Like, if, if they're saying absolutely no to changing a year-long course, I think as you, we look at the larger curriculum guide, we definitely want to look at that, but we need some more data and some understanding. We wouldn't want to make that as a quick decision at all.
No, just to, just start to talk about it.
The biggest thing is, it's published, and it's accessible to everybody.
And that I'm on board with. I'm more concerned about the immediate consequences, but that really does fall on you all. So I am really concerned that it, in the short timeframe, is going to cause a lot of chaos on the operational level.
Oh, hey, I heard, I can opt out.
So...
The other option was, we, as we started to tell students, hey, this is a year-long class, we're not approving any modifications. I'm assuming that's why most of these parents are here tonight, because they want modifications for their kids. So, like, this is when, when Dr. Freitas brought this to me on Thursday, he's like, is this really, should we wait a year to do this? I'm like, no, this, we're doing staffing right now, if we're going to fix it, there is a, we just need to make sure all kids have access to the opportunity, and the teachers and the administration have, understand there should be some parameters in place, that this is what we're going to do, so that we're not just, right? We can fix the accounting piece on our end in the system very easily.
Sure.
You know?
We want, yeah, we want to meet our students' needs and interests, and we're here for our students, and we also want to collaborate, right, with our teachers, right? I mean, build a community, so, so yes, board, thank you for attention to this matter.
Are we good?
Yep.
I'll bring a recommendation. I'll have Dr. Freitas and his team bring a recommendation of how to amend the curriculum guide in December.
Does our curriculum principal, Ms. Carly, work on it also?
I think there's been a lot of discussions going on.
Of course, because she's highly involved.
So she's in, in the loop? Okay, we're not, okay.
We're all in the loop, Lauren.
Okay.
Okay, we gotta leave the door cracked open, it's an open meeting, I'm sorry.
To continue...
Just a little bit, I don't care, as long as it's not closed, you're good.
To continue with my presentation under activity and athletics, we're in November, winter sports have begun, and we ask that all parents register, the students, the student register. There was a question submitted about the freshman's driving range closed and where the golf team's going to go. I know our golf team, they're, I mean, they're going to find a place, you know, they're talking about it right now. It is a shame, right, when a local venue kind of closes where students can go and practice. So we may have to drive a few more miles to find another practice range, but we will definitely find a, a practice range for our Bulldogs.
They might need a bigger budget.
Yeah, that could be a problem.
That concludes my principal's report.
You have a DEI piece?
I do.
Oh, yeah, you want to let the students go?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to invite Ms. Lopez to go over her...
And thanks again for jumping in on that. We, thank you for, remind us on occasion, so, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. Greetings on our board. Unfortunately, Olivia was not able to make it tonight, so I will be presenting the student's report on her and I's behalf. So to sort out for teaching and learning for the month of November, I would like to share a college application update. November 1st is the early action deadline for the majority of my schools. I submitted applications to nine schools, and they were all across the country, from the east to the west coast, even the Midwest. I applied for restrictive early action to Stanford University, that is my top school, but I was accepted to Mizzou through rolling admission recently. But that concludes my update for college applications.
We'll keep our fingers crossed for you.
Thank you.
It's a stressful time.
For second, we have school culture in operation for the month of November. On the 10th, Best Buddies had a food drive. That was in collaboration with the Share Food, Share Love Food pantry in light of Thanksgiving in the next few weeks. On the 12th, today, there was a college planning tips for freshmen presentation, which was led by Student Services, that occurred from six to seven P.M. in the Little Theater. And on the 22nd, the Young Community Changemakers applications are due. It is a program run by the Community Memorial Foundation.
Yeah, I'm sorry, were you a changemaker?
Yes, I was a changemaker. I had the privilege of participating last year, and it was an opportunity to learn about ethics as well as grant-making, but...
It's a great program.
It is a great program, and I was immersed with people who had similar minds as me, and I got to meet different people from different schools, since there's students from Nazareth Academy, Hensdale, Lions Township, but I had the opportunity to distribute a fifteen K grant among different nonprofit organizations in the Cook and Page Counties. So I would highly recommend any, any juniors or seniors taking advantage of that opportunity. In regards to activities and athletics for the month of November, from the 14th to the 17th, there will be the Fall Play, Shoot, Spear and Love, that will occur on Thursday, Friday and Saturday at seven P.M., and then Sunday at two P.M. that will occur in the auditorium. The cost for that are ten dollars for adults, five dollars for students and senior citizens, but we wish good luck to all of our performers. On the 20th, the RV Orchestra will have their festival performance that will occur at seven P.M. in the auditorium, so we wish good luck to all of our performers there as well. On the 22nd, the RV Educational Foundation will have their second magic show that will occur from six-thirty to nine P.M. in the Little Theater. They are welcoming RV alum Trent James as the main performance. And in the month of December, on the 13th, the RV Clarion will have their hard coffee distribution that will occur at seven fifteen A.M. indoors A and G, and it is a holiday-themed hard coffee in light of winter break before that week. But that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Dr. Freitas.
Board members, I would like to present next our Equity Action Plan. It is leaked there, I didn't make a paper conference as well, seeing you all.
Thank you.
Good evening again, our board members. Before you are is our Equity Action Plan, co-created by District Equity Leadership Team. The team is comprised of district leadership, building leadership, and teachers. The EAP is broken down into five strands: systems, teaching and learning, student voice, climate and culture, professional development, and family and community as agency. The system strand is working on an equity definition to be brought forth to the Board of Education when ready. So our district leadership will engage the board to co-create an equity definition. The teaching and learning strand is working on the transition to the ACT and strengthening our MTSS structure and procedure while also reviewing the effectiveness of our interventions to address the achievement gap. The student voice, climate and culture strand is working on supporting the student equity leadership team and their action plan, you know, their focus on how do we, you know, leverage, you know, students in the cafeteria, you know, things of interest to that, you know, activity attendance as well, so how can they leverage the spaces, you know, for learning and engagement and attendance. The professional development strand is working on PD opportunities for our staff. In December, about twelve staff members will be attending the Multilingual Illinois State Conference, and the family and community agency strand is working on parent universities. So in a nutshell, board members, that is what our strands are working on. I did receive a few questions by board members regarding the plan. One of the questions was under teaching and learning, and this was asked several board members, what achievement gaps have been identified? You know, if you look at our data on our little report card, you know, the mainstream population, right, when you think of mainstream, you think of why not Hispanic students, you know, there are performing, you know, black and brown students when it comes to the ACT. You know, however, if you look at other data points when it comes to GPA, you know, all groups are doing fairly well together. But we, we see the gap, you know, in the achievement gap, and we're, you know, we're committed to closing it. Under the professional development strand, there was a question submitted about how is the professional development being communicated different from our work from Dr. Dubiel? So really, it's continued opportunities focused on best practices, right? So we're getting into teaching, like, teaching kind of workshops, the mechanics of it. So that's how it differs a little bit as well, you know? For example, a lot of our teachers that will be attending and admin the conference in December, right, there's best practices with EL students, you know, there's a lot of workshops, there's systemic also workshops as well. So it's in addition to the work we're doing. For the family and communities agency strand, there were questions submitted, which college of credit is being used, you know, we're looking at school report card data, dual enrollment. Now, we've had dual enrollment over two years now, right? You know, we've had about thirty students go through programs, so what are they interested in? How can we support, you know, and grow? Also, clearinghouse data, I know too many board members, you know, brought up, it's important, right, to see where students are going. You know, I think of College of DuPage, how can we work with them to expand possible dual credit opportunity, right? If you can't work with one community college, maybe you could work with another, right? So that data kind of helps to see, oh, wow, these many students go there, let me continue engaging, right, you know, that college. So that's some of the data that we're using. I want to say those were all the questions submitted by our board members. Are there any other questions? Ms. Gasca.
So I was the one who submitted those questions?
Yes.
It's okay to let everyone know. I must say, I was a little disappointed with the plan. The plan is very, there's not a lot of metrics here. Like, when I ask for what achievement gaps have been identified, I really want to know what achievement gaps have been identified. Have we been looking, I know we're transitioning to the ACT, but we've had multiple years of SAT data.
Yes, yes.
What does that data, what story is it telling us? What else could we be doing to, like, what are the steps that you're going to take to ensure that the gap is closed?
That's what you're gonna...
In order for that to, like, I want to know what the gap is.
Aren't you addressing, you, I think that's what we said, put that in December? That's what you said in the report.
Yes, yes, in December.
So it might be a good idea, I think, what Ms. Gasca was looking for specifically, like, hey, we said we're down in math, correct?
Correct.
These are the interventions?
Like, how many points are we down in math? Which groups are showing the gaps? Which groups have bigger gaps?
What interventions are you using to address the gap?
What interventions are in place?
Yes.
My concern was, there's a lot of focus on, we are now going to support the transition to the ACT. I don't want the SAT data to now be lost because we are transitioning to ACT. I understand they're two different exams, students tend to do better in one than the other, however, that should not erase data that has been around for a few years now. The other question was in the professional learning strand, I think we've been hearing now for a couple of years about Dr. Dubiel.
Yes.
So this seemed, to me, it seemed like it should, this particular goal should be building on what you all have been doing with Dr. Dubiel already, and it didn't quite communicate that. And then in the family and community as agency...
Yes.
It was the two-part question of what data is being used?
Yes.
Maybe add that to the actual document so that it's clear?
Sure.
So that when one sees it, one can see, like, oh, okay, I know exactly where this is going. And then the other one, the other question was on topics for parent universities. I've noticed that the ones that are listed on this plan, they've already taken place, so what's next?
Sure, sure, and I could, I mean, we have, you know, I think of, we always have a fantastic spring, you know, college career fair, trades fair, so really, you know, bringing that, that's important to our students, so bringing kind of a version, you know, of that to parents, or a parent university, this is what to expect in the spring, so this is the thing that works. But those are some changes that I can add without a problem. We have in place.
But some of those parent university, you only had, like, four planned for this year, so I mean, just because he's...
Yes, I mean, that was a plan for a year.
The goal was to do them early so parents know how to address them throughout the school year, not just for this report.
So that we're not having parent universities in the spring?
He's got one coming up, I think.
Yes, we have one, we have one in November.
In November, correct.
Bullying and social media, right? But the idea was to try to get them earlier in the school year so that parents can use that information throughout the school year. I don't know what, you and Ms. Fletcher put those together, there may be one for the spring, I don't know what you're working on. Is that correct, or...
That's correct. I mean, the plan was to do it early, yes, but I mean, we're, we're going to continue, you know, I mean, we've, we brought them all, right, within relatively two or three months, you know, but, I mean, I could see us doing it quarterly without a problem.
We could just add some metrics to the plan, I think, which would make it more robust.
Yeah, sure. Metrics, future...
I have a question, too. On the parent university, when I look at that, too, I guess I'm thinking of it a little bit different, too. I remember talking with one of our pastors' wives, she came from Nicaragua, and she was saying that the school where they were at, they had these universities for the parents using some of the Title I funds. And she was sharing with me how, as the parents had access to, like, language and computer skills, and she was just sharing how, you know, they started in the Chicago School with some of this opportunity. She said she'd drop off the kids, being new to the United States, you know, drop off the kids, and then being able to take her classes there at school, pick up the kids, and said, really kind of helped not only improve our own skills, but then also kind of learn what, see what the kids were doing, and learn some of the culture and all of that, and it was kind of like a little university there, and I didn't even realize that Title I funds could be applied to some of that stuff.
So they were teaching English as a second language classes?
Yeah, and computer classes for parents at the library, and so really opening up some, you know, opportunities to, you know, engage with students and the culture.
And for just, you know, we do have, I mean, we have a small group, you know, we've had, you know, the class ESL, because I mean, small group of people, you know, but we do offer those supports, yeah.
Are we able to use our Title I funds towards things like that?
For students enrolled in our school, not just for the general, like, we use it for our families that have students enrolling.
But like our parents of kids, like, if our parents want to do computer classes, could we?
Well, I don't think we, I don't know if they go specific in the parent, or computer classes that teach parents how to use computers, but I know they have a parent group where they have all our ESL student parent group to talk about housing, medical care, resources.
Yes.
We use Title III funds for that, because those, that's for EL supports, so we use Title III, not Title I for, for those.
Well, it could be interesting if, you know, to broaden those offerings as the occasion permits, right?
Absolutely.
Any more comments or questions?
Oh, I see.
That you have your stuff addressed?
Metrics, I'm...
I look forward to looking at it.
Okay, so December, Dr. Freitas?
Okay.
Okay. We did the audit, FOIA requests, there were no FOIA requests in this packet, right?
No FOIA responses from last, from last month. There'll be FOIA responses for December.
Okay. There's always FOIA somewhere. The remaining goals, any more discussion, the rest of the district goals from anyone?
I think when Dr. Freitas addresses the academic gaps, it will also tie into the MTSS interventions, which was district goal one, teaching and learning, so that update will be provided in December from Dr. Freitas.
Okay. It's challenging because it's a one-page document, right? So the reports we get all year are supposed to dovetail into these broader goals, and so I think that may be a way to address it, too. so I think that may be a way to address it, too. You know, this is a report the board gets in April, or this is a board gets, a report the board received in July, something along those lines may be helpful.
And the idea of this one pager was the board wanted to have something like we do with the district goals, of things we're going to be working on throughout this entire year. So this is something that we had Dr. Freitas put this together, just so if someone clicked on our equity action plan, they can see, hey, here are the things they're working on. Now, as identified by Ms. Gasko, you know, it'd be nice for the board to get a check-in of like, okay, well, here's, be more specific, this is general for the, for the general public, but as a board level, it's nice to have a check-in, like, we planned on doing four parent universities, three have already occurred, one is coming up, we're doing these interventions, here's some of the data, the interventions we're seeing after first quarter, right? Like, just some kind of progress monitoring, okay, Dr. Freitas?
I think it's a nice model. You've got the five different areas, and, you know, a nice visual with the five, you know, some graphics in there, because it's not a linear, flat plan. You've got five areas that you can really grow and expand on, and so I hope that, you know, you're able to run with that, and, you know, each of the five areas will probably grow at its own kind of pace, some will grow fast and then take off, but, yeah, I think you've got a lot of, a lot of opportunity to see it really just blossom out.
So, next up is the IASB 2024 Resolutions Committee Report. So we've previously nominated, asked, requested that Ms. Ruska continue to be our representative for IASB. Everyone's had a chance to look at this, we've had it for a couple of board meetings. Do we, we've normally done more of a straw vote, and just said, does anyone have any objections to the IASB recommendations for any of their particular policies?
Yeah, it's just kind of like a quick one, I think there's like five, or the first one, you know, that we'll vote on, it was just a language change on Robert's rules. Did anybody see anything opposed to that?
Well, no, I think they had them grouped together by ones where IASB recommended, except-
There was the first one that would have been, that would be voted on at the meeting.
Right, so does anybody disagree with what the IASB is recommending?
Right, so that very first one was on language, on how we do our business, is proposed constitution amendment, that would be a vote separate in itself, and that was just language change in how Robert's rules, you know, if it conflicted with the bylaws, there was room around it.
We don't need to, do we need to go through each one?
Well, just real quick.
People have an objection to their recommendation.
The only one I would ask the board to just maybe discuss was number two?
Yeah, I am against number two.
About the financing being dedicated to charter schools?
Yeah, I agree, I question that one as well.
Well, I don't think it's being dedicated to charter schools, I think they want to apply the same rigor and formula to charter schools.
They want to expand EBF to charters.
EBF to charter schools, I don't think we want that, we want-
I do not want that.
Well, we're still funding charter schools, so, so here's-
And they don't have to follow the same rules and regulations based on their charter, and that is a difference that I am, I'm a voice of one of seven, I am opposed.
So let's do a quick thumbs up, thumbs down on this one. The IASB's recommendation is to accept the, to extend EBF funding formula to charter schools, right? That is what they're recommending they lobby for?
Yes.
Right? Ryan?
I am opposed.
Okay.
Opposed.
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 Okay, and I'm happy to do that, and I just want to bring out there, my understanding of this, there's been a lot of contention at the delegate about charter schools, because charter schools do take money from the tax dollars. And so many of the districts don't want charter schools being funded anyway, because it's take, you know, it's taking money away. So my understanding here was that it was going to limit some of the money that charter schools were taking, because they would have to follow now some of the other rules. Right now, they don't have to follow the rules.
That, I think that's, that's not quite the interpretation, the way it's written here.
No, that just says they're going to urge, that doesn't mean they mandate.
So, you know, if anything's different, so I, you know, I don't have a horse of that, I'm not, fine, you know, but that was my take, having sit in the delegate meetings, this is a constant that they-
Well, then they should write up their resolutions more clearly to capture whatever the discussion was, right? So, okay, so on number two, we would be a no. Is everyone else okay with a yes on one, three, four, five, and six?
Yes.
Yeah, and you know, again, they are very much local control. You know, my contentions with cell phones, you know, I read this, and like, even the state, they're talking about cell phones, oh, we got to come up with a rule. And again, IASB is like, no, leave it up to the local entities to come up with their own rules. So again, you know, they are consistent with what they believe in local control.
So that, that captures seven, eight, nine, and 10? I think we're all in a, do I hear agreement with the IASB recommendations?
I just want to make sure five was a do not adopt, yeah, okay. And you did see five, right, on the healthcare plan? And you're okay with do not adopt?
No, it's a do adopt.
It's a do adopt.
It's a do adopt.
Everything is yes, do adopt.
Everything is a yes, except for two.
So again, this is a document by which they would set their legislative agenda.
Yes.
Right? If there ends up being a great co-op that the Egyptian section can use through the state of Illinois, then that would be something maybe we could look at, but I don't, there's a lot of steps between this and, and finalization.
Yeah, this just gives them a guide where they're going to put their resources, yeah.
Correct. Anything, thank you for bringing that up, Dr. Sinkus, on the charter, you read, you read the room well.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. Thank you in advance for sitting through this on Sunday, right, a week from Sunday?
No, Saturday morning.
Oh, a week from Saturday?
Yeah.
Very good.
Sorry, Saturday morning.
Thank you, thank you. Visitor statements, yes. Just want to come on up, let me read our, completed our reports. The Board of Education welcomes and encourages the participation of its citizens in the business of the school district. There are two points in the meeting where visitor statements are scheduled. Citizens are welcome to raise questions or make comments at either one. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual and cannot be combined. Please note, the Board of Education will not answer questions or engage in dialogue during visitor comments. If a person would like additional time to address the board, such a request should be submitted in writing 48 hours before the meeting to the superintendent. And did you have any of those for this session?
And I'll put my hand up when you have 30 seconds for me, okay?
Okay. All right, and I understand the discussion fires, so I had a long speech, so I'm going to kind of move around on my-
Could you state your name real quick, I'm sorry?
Alice Enochs, I have a son who is a junior, and he is enrolled in the spring semester of band, which is just one semester for him. He was in marching band his freshman and sophomore year, he liked marching band, but he also liked playing sports. He tried to do both during sophomore year, but between homework, marching band, and soccer practice in the games, it just got to be too much for him. We were very happy that we were able to register, that he was able to register for the band class for just the spring semester, which is going to happen this school year. That gave him the opportunity to continue playing in the band, but also play sports as well. And so I'm going to jump. I know that we have a, I like to think we still have a robust music program, and I think that we have, we stand apart from other schools, in my opinion, for offering other artistic, I call it artistic offerings. One other point is, I want to say that research has shown that students who participate in music education programs perform better on tests than those who don't. Students who have experience with music performance also score higher on SAT and ACT. Music classes provide a social setting where students learn to work together as a team. Music education helps students build confidence about who they are and what they can achieve. Music education can improve memory by encouraging neurological activity and training the mind to process new information faster. Music can help students learn how to express themselves better and develop their emotional intelligence. Social and emotional intelligence is the ability to be aware of and manage one's own emotions and the emotions of others, which is much needed in our current society. So the reason he chose to do just the spring semester, that came up in conversation, was because he wanted to play sports in the fall, and between the class schedule and sports, it was too much to do the marching band and that, but this still gives him the opportunity to continue playing in the band, which in the fall sport, in the fall, they focus on the marching aspect of band, and then in the spring, it becomes more of a cancer band. So for him, this was perfect, he's, this is, he's in his third year participating in band, next year will be his fourth year, his senior year, and just like the RB sports teams, at the end of the music season, the music department recognizes the students with a banner. If he cannot take the one semester of band next school year, he will not be able to receive the banner. This might seem unimportant to you all, but to, not to the students that have participated in activity for all four years of their high school career. These banners are important because it showcases that music is just as important as the sports in the school. Okay, please don't take away the option for the RB students to choose one semester of music class. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Ella Jamfitra, I am a junior at RB.
I'm Isabella Abernathy, I'm also a junior year at RB.
And we are also going to talk on this issue of, you know, one semester, full-year class type of situation. This year, when I went in to pick my classes for senior year, very exciting, I was excited to pick all my classes, I have, I want to take two choirs next year, I want to take magical singers, and I want to do best buddies choir, because one of my career paths, and I'm deciding between a few special education, so best buddies choir would be great, and I'm just kind of excited, it mixes all my favorite things, singing, and then helping special education students, and it'd just be a really cool activity. Unfortunately, I didn't have room in my schedule to do another full, long class with APs and, you know, just classes. So I was planning on taking GOV and then, that's Bulldog Buddy Choir, but my counselor straight out told me, you can't take that as one semester, RBHS is not doing that anymore. He didn't say anything that we discussed here, he didn't say like, oh, like, maybe you'll have an option, he just told me, we're not doing that anymore, you can only take it as a year-long class. And that took me by surprise, because we have kids in this department that are doing amazing things, like Caroline Moran comes to mind, Caleb, as all of you know Caleb, you know, football player, choir, they started out freshman year only taking choir as one semester. So if, therefore, if people are putting in place now that you can only take it as one year, maybe these students would not be where they are right now. So I was very disappointed to hear that that was going to happen, and it was just very abrupt, so, and then, luckily, I'm gonna take Bulldog Buddy Choir next year, but I'm also a student that, you know, is very, I like getting things done, so I'm still going to figure it out, but some students, you know, the minute their counselor tells them, you can't do that, it's like, oh, just take it out, it's fine, just take it out, we'll put foods or something else in there, you know? So, that's what I'm saying, situation.
And I'm here to talk about the band, so my freshman year, I took concert band, and then last year, my sophomore year, I took jazz band and I took symphonic band. And jazz band, I'm going to talk specifically about jazz band, because it's a very unique course, and it's kind of similar to rock band in a way, where it's more student-led, like, we have these groups called combos that we perform at Kiwanis Park for the Jazz Festival, and it's a lot of independent student work, and, like, usually when someone in jazz will join for a half a semester, the teachers will be like, oh, this is our brand new student, and I heard you guys mention that the teachers were opposed to having it for half a semester, and by the looks of it, they haven't. And then also, similar to what Mrs. Enochs said, I have a load of friends who are filled with sports and other extracurricular activities, and just don't have enough time in their schedule to fit a full semester of band. And I think that it should be open to an option, because, similar to Ella and everybody else, we still want to be involved in the music program and do what we love, but if there's just not enough room in the school year, then I think it would be cruel to take away that.
Follow up with your counselor after the December meeting, okay?
Thank you. Also, please come and see the fall play, we're trying hard on it, and yes, listening everyone, so please come and see that.
We are students from the Fall Play, Shakespeare in Love. We'd really like you to come see our performances this weekend.
Yes, this weekend is November 14th through 17th.
Yeah, we've been working really, really hard, we're really excited to come on the show, and we're just trying to get word of mouth out, so, you know, please come to see it, tell your neighbors to come to see it, we're really excited, we think it's going to be a great show.
Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday matinee, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I think it was in all of our packets from the superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you ask me?
My name is Demarcus Roboto, I am a senior, and I want to talk about my sophomore year, in which the half-and-half program of both jazz and rock band has helped me a lot in my life, and mentally has shown me what I can do with my life. In sophomore year, I took rock band first semester and jazz band second semester. Rock band allowed me in the first semester to be able to explore my ability on guitar and learn. This ability that I've learned on guitar and skill has monumentally helped my mental state, as I've been able to use it as a way to express my emotions, in both how I feel and mentally am. This is something that I wish many students can do, and the only reason I was able to do this was because of that one semester of rock band that I took. And now, I've been able to show many other people what that is like with both my guitar skills and what music I play. Same thing with jazz. That one semester of jazz was just a fluke of if I wanted to try it or not, or if I liked it, if I liked the genre of music. And slowly, it has brought me down a rabbit hole of things that I've loved about music, and has opened my mind to a lot of things. Jazz by itself is an art form that is made to express many people, and is colorblind to race and everything. It is an extremely expressive music form, and it requires not just your eyes to be open, but your mind, and allows openness of all kinds. I've learned this in the first semester from both Mr. Baum and Mr. Loeb, as Mr. Loeb that year directed that program, and Mr. Baum, who directed the rock band program my first semester. I've been able to learn all those things in that one semester of rock band and that one semester of jazz band. That one semester of rock band has led me to continue practicing, and now I play for the six-man band for basketball games consistently. That second semester of jazz band has led me to upgrade to jazz ensemble, and now I perform for a community college in DePaul and am majoring in both jazz and classical. This is not to count the fact that I already do perform in both the ensemble programs, like Win Ensemble. I could not have done all of these things if it weren't for that half-and-half program. It is something that we need to keep for other students, so that they can both, A, express themselves and B, find a career. And the most important thing to me is to see what they want to do. If they want to express music to others because they feel a certain way, if they want to be able to let themselves go, if they want to have something for themselves. Music is that opportunity, without those half-and-half programs, we cannot allow those students to do that. If they are stuck with one, they may not be able to explore the other, or they might be discouraged because that is not what they see or like. If we remove that program, it might cause those students to be lost again, and not be able to find those things later in life, or when it's too late. And I hope that we continue to use this program, as is and as how the conductors and counselors have used it, as it is extremely successful, as you can see with me, and has led to a lot of benefits. If we can continue this program, I'd love to see that for other students.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were you able to transition second semester, okay in that class?
Of course.
Okay, thank you. It's important to add, thank you. Are those both full year?
No, rocking.
Rock band is a semester, jazz is a full year.
My name is Zoe Fulcher, I'm currently a junior at RB, and I've taken symphonic band for one semester this year in the fall. I can't speak to Clarion or Rouser, but for the music classes, I know that this one semester is very important to students, especially in band classes, the gym waiver is the only reason some students can take these classes, because of other requirements. For me, I needed to fill an economics requirement the second semester. I also know that many students who are taking these classes for one semester are already enrolled in another music class, for example, some are enrolled in orchestra and taking band for a semester, and many of these students are interested in continuing these into college, whether it be for a major, minor, or a hobby. I personally am interested in majoring or minoring in something having to do with music, so this helps me. Also, my one semester band this year has really helped me find something I love, I really enjoyed this semester, I'm taking it for a full year next year, and giving students the opportunity to take this class for one semester can, like, leave them to find something they enjoy, and find something that they would be interested in pursuing in the future. And then, yeah, really, it's just a great opportunity to try more things. I know many students use this, not enough for it to be too much of a problem, really.
Can you just tell us your name real quick? I'm sorry.
Yes, sorry. My name is Heidi Conkey. I am a member of the symphonic band currently right now. I am taking symphonic band as a full year course. However, when I went into course selection, like some of my peers, I was surprised to find that I was not able to take what I was hoping for, which is choir, as a one semester I discussed this with some of my, some of my peers in the music department and there was a general sense of confusion, I think, was the main feeling towards it. And I had a friend go so far as to create a petition to keep the option to have music classes and fine arts classes generally as a one semester option. For a school that so highly promotes lots of different options, a variety of clubs, and as I'm not sure who said it, a robust curriculum guide that I have had the pleasure to look through sometimes, a lot of different classes are offered. I think that it's good to keep that kind of diversity in the school day, not only in after-school activities. I have a friend who is taking Concert Corral for one semester this year. And she has a phenomenal voice and I cannot wait for her to be able to share it. And she wanted to take CAP, College Admissions Prep, for a semester. And had she not had that option to take Concert Corral as a one semester class, she would not be able to both prepare herself for the ACT with that class and also share her voice and develop upon that talent. So I really, I am greatly in favor of being able to have that one semester option. I know even people in symphonic band are great assets to our ensemble, like Zoe who just spoke. And I just, I am absolutely in favor of that, of that diversity. And I hope that there is a way to accommodate that, that does not inhibit function, but still allows that kind of, I'm not quite sure the word that I'm looking for, but that, that variety, that opportunity for students to be able to express themselves and achieve what they want to achieve in their high school time where they are able to do it best. And that's about it.
You did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, we've got some more.
Hi, I'm Olivia Dobby. I'm a senior involved in the RB music department.
My name is Afton Douglas and I am also a senior involved in the RB music department.
So I am coming to speak to you today on behalf of a member of the orchestra, the orchestra president, and also a member of the RB symphonic band. So in my personal experience, I have been involved in the RB's orchestra since my freshman year. It's something that I so, so love being a part of and it's really helped shape me and build character into the person that I am so proud to be today. And joining that orchestra also led to me joining band my junior year. My friends were in it and they encouraged me to join as well. And how could I say no to all my friends? I would love to be involved in music, just as they are. So I joined symphonic band last year for both first semester and second semester, and I love to say it's one of the best decisions I've made. I made more friends, I was more musically involved, and I learned. There was unfortunately, a fluke in my scheduling my sophomore year as I underwent a change of counselors. Some of my gym credits were not accounted for. So I came into my senior year unaware that I was missing credits for gym that I would be needing to graduate. Through a discussion with my counselor, I found out that I would be able to graduate with the number of gym credits required if I took second semester gym this year. This for me is very sad because I love being a part of the band for the full year. It provides me with that opportunity to grow as a person and a musician. And because of a mistake that was not my own, I unfortunately cannot follow through both semesters here. While it is a shame that I have to do this, the availability to take one semester of band is what's helping me stay involved in music and also graduate on time with my peers. Without this availability, I would not be able to take band and I would have to take a gym to compensate both first semester and second semester because of that PE waiver that's provided. So because of this, I would like for you to consider the one semester option for band. In addition to this, I would like to mention something on behalf of the orchestras. While I'm a senior and I'm leaving the orchestras this year unfortunately, my little sister is an eighth grader from Hauser Junior High. She plays the viola and is so looking forward to joining Mr. Loeb and the rest of the RB orchestra program at RB next year. However, she is a busy girl and one I am very proud of. She is involved in swimming, cheerleading, dance, palms, and plans to continue all of these during high school. She does not believe this will allow her enough time to grow as a freshman student and do orchestra and all her sports. Because of this, she hopes to take one semester of string orchestra, which is a class that the, that the school has previously offered as either one semester, second semester, or you could take both semesters. This would be a great option for incoming students such as herself, where she would be able to experience the orchestra program and also all the other things she has in mind.
I would also like to say, just as a warning, the music department is not going to shrink. It is actually most likely going to grow. As we have already seen, attending concerts at our little siblings at Hauser, there are so many music students. The music program is going to grow.
In fact, SC Gross Middle School had their concert at RB this year in combination with us because they could not fit it at their own school. We have such a, our community puts so much love and care into growing music that we need to continue that as time goes on.
Good job, ladies.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Priscilla Rudy, mother of a sophomore. My only request is that you consider the fear of teachers when you ask them questions, outright from the principal, no offense, Dr. Freitas, of them giving you their honest opinion. I work for the federal government and one of the things that we have been having many sessions on is the fear of retaliation when you speak out about something that you're not necessarily happy with. And it seemed, and I will say seemed because I don't know, that when Dr. Freitas mentioned that he had sent emails to these teachers and the information that they gave back to him was that they would prefer that it be a year situation rather than a semester. I would hope that you don't take that as your full evidence that this is the way it should be and that you consider the fact that this has been going on for years and these teachers, if you know, have not complained about this being a situation where kids are going from semester to semester and switching things up. So if the teachers haven't complained and it's just now becoming something that the administration has noticed, what's the problem? Don't take one teacher's response to an email and put that much weight on it. Be transparent with all of us to make sure that what these kids need are getting delivered to them. And should be very transparent and you should not put weight on one email because some people in any profession, I'm sure in all of your professions, there is sometimes a fear of retaliation if they speak their truth. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Maggie White from Riverside. Today I just want to address the board and the community gathered here about equity versus equality. Equality and equity are often discussed in tandem, but they do not mean the same thing. Equality looks to ensure that resources are distributed evenly, but a one-size-fits-all approach of equality does not lead to equitable outcomes. Equity recognizes that individuals have different needs and circumstances. By considering the need of each individual student's, equity can help deliver on the promise to help every student thrive and achieve the outcomes they need to succeed beyond high school. For the last 18 years, RB has accommodated music students who find a haven in band and choir rooms to register for a semester of music in order to squeeze a second period of music into their busy schedules, as we've heard. Many of them have plans to pursue the performing arts in their post-secondary endeavors. This is a wonderful example of our school acting in an equitable manner to enable these students to meet important educational outcomes. An equality play would be to say to the student something like, you can't take music for a semester because year-long classes like AP Psychology, AP Euro, Applied Zoology, and Spanish, for example, do not allow students to drop them after a semester and pick up another class. Equality says all classes have to be categorized exactly the same. As a parent, I appreciate that the school continues to demonstrate caring, concern, and flexibility in helping our students get the educational experiences they need to be happy, productive adults. And this is just one of the reasons we chose to move into a small schools district like RB. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan.
Thank you. We have another one.
Hello, my name is Jeanette Douglas. I have a senior, a sophomore, and an eighth grader. I just wanted to say, I'm, I understand you said some students are using this split some, split year semester thing to take study hall or early release. The music students I do, I know, are not doing that. They are doing this to take more. These students do so much and they are amazing. I hope that the board considers ways to help them accomplish more and not stamp down on them doing more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking around one more time before I move on. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Additional discussion items from anyone on the board? I think we're going to have some additional discussion on this topic, obviously. I think we addressed a lot of the questions that came up, I think, were resolved to some extent and we'll continue having discussions in December. But anything else to add from a board member? Consent agenda, we have a number of items on, actually just a handful of items on consent. Ms. Gasko?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on October 8 and 22, 2024, open and closed, as presented in the November 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Can we have a roll call, please? I'm sorry, all in favor? I apologize. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes, old business, update on the solar panels under life safety, capital improvement, sustainability. Dr. Spatana?
The administration has been in communication with the new third-party solar consultant, as I mentioned at the last board meeting. We held a meeting between the potential consultant, myself, and the district's construction management. And we are currently trying to negotiate a contract with the consultant and we hope to have a final contract for the board's consideration at the December meeting.
Thank you. Then it'll be a first read in December or do we have any sense of how we want to handle that?
Hopefully when I, we have a finalized contract, I can get a sense of what the new timeline will be and that can hopefully engage with.
The council can look at it.
First read or a second read if we have time.
Okay, we'll wait to hear back from you then. Thank you. New business, payment of bills. Were there any questions submitted? Dr. Spatana?
I believe I had any on payment of bills.
No? Then can we have a motion?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills as presented in the November 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst. We do need a roll call.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Nelbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. School maintenance project grant. This is a first read or this is a second read?
This is a first read. School maintenance project grant is, many of you are familiar, as we have applied for it in the past few years and received it. It's a dollar-for-dollar matching grant program that provides up to $50,000 to school districts exclusively for the maintenance and upkeep of buildings and structures for educational purposes. It's a requirement that the district match the amount, up to 50,000. Past projects for the district have include, included the solar panel project, offsetting some costs for the auditorium lighting to LED lighting, placing bathroom partitions, installing the electric car charging stations. So the attached application would be for four projects, replacing the weight room floor, replacing the diving board stand and the diving board, replacing the starting blocks in the pool, and updating the hallway doors to be connected with the fire panel. Once a grant is submitted, it's different than all the other grants I manage, you can't amend it. So that's why I'm recommending we put in some projects that will go over the 100,000 so we get the 50 matched, just in case a project comes in under budget, something comes in cheaper, we don't have to give money back to the state.
So I know you did brief us on this previously. Do you want us to approve it this evening? Is this the, is the goal to approve it to hit a deadline from the state?
It would be, I mean, it certainly would be helpful. It's due a couple of days after the December board meeting. So I, I have time for a second read, but it would be helpful if it was approved tonight as well.
Again, these are just.
I don't anticipate any changes.
These are just proposed projects.
Correct.
And proposed matching funding.
Correct. So if we did, if we submitted the grant as written and we decided we weren't going to do one of the projects, nothing happens. And that's why I put four projects in there so that we had the flexibility to, to do the projects that we posted.
Any objection to approving tonight?
No objection, just one question. If, if it's approved, do you have to do all four or?
No.
Okay. You do not.
Because the dollar amount's capped at the 50-plus, right?
But if you don't put the four proj, yes, the dollar amount is capped at 50,000. And if you don't put in a project, you can't amend it later. So that's why it's important to put the projects in that you think are going to happen now so that you get the approval and you have the flexibility to receive reimbursement for them.
But you're saying you can do them in tandem?
Mm-hmm.
You can take, okay. Yeah. It's an overranger to me.
Okay, I think I'm, I'm seeing lead from the board to move ahead, so thank you.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the school maintenance project grant application as presented in the November 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
I'll second.
A second from Mr. Novak. We need a roll call, please.
Ms. Reska?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Nelbeck?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Yes. And this one is a first read, the proposed estimated 2024 tax levy.
Yes, this is a first read of the tax levy that must be filed in December. It was reviewed with Finance Advisory Council on November 7. The proposal is to approve a levy of an increase of 4.95% in order to capture the maximum amount of taxes on new property. So the district historically, when CPI is below 5%, is to do what's called a balloon levy. And the reason we do a balloon levy or levy for more, such as 4.95%, is so that we can capture the maximum amount on new taxes. That amount is arbitrary to all the rest of the taxpayers because Cook County will come in and limit you to CPI or 5%, whichever is lower. So this year CPI is 3.4%. So the district is limited to 3.4% increase on all other property. The 4.95% is just on new property. Also, I should mention, I didn't discuss it in here, but our bond payments have decreased as people who have been watching regularly have heard multiple occasions. And so while we'll be asking for a 3.4% increase, the bond payment is decreasing, so it'll actually be a lower increase to taxpayers.
So again, we're not at, we're not going to get a 4.95% increase just so the public hears that clearly. It's just, it'll be based on CPI, but we do that so if there's new property.
Yes, this is a first read of the tax levy that must be filed in December. It was reviewed with the Finance Advisory Council on November 7. The proposal is to approve a levy of an increase of 4.95% in order to capture the maximum amount of taxes on new property. So the district historically, when CPI is below 5%, is to do what's called a balloon levy. And the reason we do a balloon levy or levy for more, such as 4.95%, is so that we can capture the maximum amount on new taxes. That amount is arbitrary to all the rest of the taxpayers because Cook County will come in and limit you to CPI or 5%, whichever is lower. So this year CPI is 3.4%. So the district is limited to 3.4% increase on all other property. The 4.95% is just on new property. Also, I should mention, I didn't discuss it in here, but our bond payments have decreased as people who have been watching regularly have heard multiple occasions. And so while we'll be asking for a 3.4% increase, the bond payment is decreasing, so it'll actually be a lower increase to taxpayers.
So again, we're not at, we're not going to get a 4.95% increase just so the public hears that clearly. It's just, it'll be based on CPI, but we do that so if there's new property, it has to be accounted for in our levy. Because once you don't account for that, you never get it back. Because it always compounds in the year.
And we will have the hearing on this in December.
Correct. And then also, I should mention on the form that I submitted as a first read, there is a requirement from a public act that we include fund balances. I include fund balances every board meeting, or every month, in a separate place, but I made sure to include them in that report as well.
Thank you. Any additional questions for now? Or we can have you do an additional briefing at the, at the hearing in December if that works for everyone. Life Touch contract extension.
The contract for the district's photography provider is Life Touch, which is set to expire at the end of the school year. They've been a photographer since 2017. We tried to receive three quotes back in 2017 and again in 2020. Unfortunately, one of the requirements in our contract is that they can print the barcode, and the barcode needs to meet certain requirements. And so that's why the last two times we tried to secure three quotes, Life Touch was the only company that was able to meet those requirements. This contract generates a very small amount of revenue for the district, depending on the year, around $700, which goes towards offsetting the cost of the yearbook. So we're happy with the quality of service and would like to extend their contract for three years. This is a first read. We have plenty of time if the board chooses to have a second read.
So we can either move this to consent for next month? Does that work for you timing-wise?
Yeah.
Any objection there? Okay. Activity accounts, boys bowling, girls bowling, hip-hop club, and coffee and tea club.
This is my last agenda item for tonight. But we are requesting that the board approve the new activity accounts for these four sports or clubs because they are currently holding fundraisers or will hold it in the future. And we need a way to be able to manage and account for these funds.
This we could probably use to be approved tonight if possible so that.
It would be helpful.
If there's any money changing hands or doing fundraising.
Any objection from anyone?
No.
Let's go ahead then, please.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves establishing individual activity accounts for boys bowling, girls bowling, hip-hop club, and coffee and tea club as presented in the November 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst. Do we need a roll call?
Ms. Slack?
Yes.
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Yes. This is a first read. I think Dr. Skink has mentioned it already. We have a new press plus packet, correct?
Yeah, it'll be over the next few months. Helpful to gather to, I'm giving them a break. But we'll, we'll get together either in December or get back from winter break.
And then this is, who's speaking to the IGA between SASED and District 208?
Dr. Freitas will answer the questions. I mean, this is one of, we have two students actually there. SASED is like our ladsy, but we don't have the programming that SASED has for these, the students' outplacement. And this was the best outplacement for the two students. So I have to be careful not to disclose too much publicly. But they offered this, they, they want this intergovernmental agreement. Legal counsel did review it. And this would be, we do similar agreements like with other outplace schools or, that are tuition-based. So for some reason, they wanted this to be approved. So we already have the student there.
So we, okay, so this is an ongoing relationship, and now they want the IGA to formalize?
Correct, just that there is a kid there that they're receiving services, that is not a current SASED student.
Okay, and council's reviewed it for liability purposes?
Yes. And then you had one of the questions.
Yeah, some of the questions, you know, was this for one student? Yes, it's for one student. Why is this alternative being utilized? Unfortunately, we always strive to service our students in the building, but at times, you know, it's difficult. So, you know, we have to look elsewhere.
The IEP team though determined us in the best place.
The IET determined us in the best place. It's always done in a team. And then there was a question, how does the cost of this program compare to others? I mean, costs are generated by needs and specific programming in IEP. So sometimes it's difficult to get, because every kid may have a unique IEP with different services. But, you know, we always support those services, what they need and whatever.
And I think the board.
And I spend more or under.
Right. And the board obviously has always supported our special education population. I just know that we're also mindful of, you know, that this is a budget category that does grow over time. So just wanted to make sure there was diligence done before this was selected.
Typically, the board doesn't see like when we place a student in outplacement, there's not like a tuition agreement. It's just, it is what it is.
We see it in the bills.
Right. They've never seen like an IGA like this. But I think because it's from one co-op working with another co-op. That's why they want to have. And you need that approved tonight, Dr. Freitas?
I mean, if, 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 if it pleases, yes, I mean, it would be helpful, right, to get things moved? Yes.
Any objection from anyone or more questions?
Doesn't change anything that's happening, so.
Okay. Ms. Gasko, please.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the intergovernmental agreement between SASED and District 208 for a transition program as presented in the November 12, 2024 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst. Do we do need a roll call?
Mr. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Slack?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, board.
School calendar, Ms. Salas, President Salas, this is a first read. I'm going to leave it on probably for at least November and December, and we'll take action in January just for that.
Okay.
The community has plenty of time to see this. But the union has seen it, the feeder schools have seen it. Also, local high schools. Like I try to usually align with LT this year. We're not, this current school year, we're not aligned. They went a week later, but next year we're back aligned, so, for spring break. But, so all those boxes have been checked. So I usually like to leave this on the agenda just for at least one or two reads. So the community has plenty of time to see this before we approve it.
Okay, works for me. Visitor statement. You folks stayed? This is your second chance? Going once, going twice? Okay. Discussion items, we didn't have any requested for today. Consideration of items for future meetings? Anyone? Okay. And then matters for closed session. Appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body. Student discipline.
I don't think we have any, I, I don't think there was any items. Is there any?
No.
I didn't see any.
No, there's nothing.
I mean, we normally read that as a safeguard, so if we need to go in immediately to talk.
But you're saying we don't need to go into closed session. I'm fine.
The rest of the board concur, second it. I don't think there's a reason for closed.
Okay, no, I thought maybe there was some discussion.
I'm sorry, I should have stopped.
No, 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 that's good. Stop me from reading.
Kristen, you're good, correct? You don't have anything? I don't have no negotiating.
And there's no HR packet, yeah.
Anything I need to share, I can send in the Friday update, so there is nothing.
We got a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
A second from Mr. Novak. I guess we'll have to do a roll call since we're adjourning the meeting.
No, just all in favor. All in favor.
Okay, because it's, yeah, we need a, we need a roll call for a closed session, but not for.
Aye.
Okay, aye. All in favor, we are adjourned. 9:18. Thank you, everyone.